Good evening, everybody. This is the Village of Oaklawn Board of Trustees meeting agenda. This is the Village Hall Auditorium, 9446 South Raymond Avenue. This is meeting number 2023-09. Today is Tuesday, May 9th, 2023, and it is 7:30 p.m. Madam Clerk, call for order.
Mayor of Orderer.
Present.
Trustee Sock.
Here.
Trustee Pembroke. Trustee Mallow.
Here.
Trustee Oluniechak.
Here.
Trustee Stalker.
Here.
Trustee Desmond. Trustee Pembroke and Trustee Desmond are absent.
Thank you. We have a quarter. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Veterans may salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, any public comments?
Yes, Mike Surf would be first.
Mike, up to the podium.
Thank you.
Give us your name. Are you an Oaklawn resident? I know that.
My name is Mike Surf and I am an Oaklawn resident. And I'm just here just to announce that we're going to do the Blue Ribbon Walk again at Lake Shore Park, and that is going to be on Saturday, June 3rd. We'll gather at around 11 o'clock. We'll have some bagels there earlier if anybody wants to come earlier, and we'll walk at noon. And lunch will be served by the Oaklawn Raiders afterwards. And so I just want to thank the police, that's why I'm doing this, and the first responders, all first responders. And then while I'm here, I might as well just mention and thank also the sponsors. We've got lunch that'll be provided afterwards. And again, just to say thanks to the police and give them lunch, Jack and Pat's, S.T. Provisions, Whittingham's, and then also Jesse's Tavern, P.D.'s Place, B.J. McMahon's, and American Bagels, and Stars and Stripes. And we have the Kevin Sullivan Band also there. I don't know how long she'll stay, but should be a nice day. Hopefully got nice weather.
Thank you, Mike. You've been doing this for a number of years now, am I correct?
Yeah, number nine.
Number nine, and I can tell you it's never more important than these days.
Yeah.
To recognize the work that these policemen do for this Village of Oaklawn. And I want to thank you in their name and from all the residents of the Village of Oaklawn for your efforts to do this.
Thank you, Terry.
I'll be there.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah, thank you, everyone.
Probably should have a microphone here, huh? Any other comments?
Yes, Shannon Green.
Hi, Shannon, are you an Oaklawn resident?
I am, yes.
Okay.
Um, I just wanted to express gratitude to you, Mayor of Orderer, for reading tonight's Gun Violence Awareness Day proclamation. I'm the parent of an incoming Seward kindergartner, and I also teach at Oaklawn High School. As an educator and a parent, I have known firsthand the fear that gun violence and threats of gun violence create in our school communities. Like many Americans, I grieved the shooting in Allen, Texas this weekend, as I have grieved many tragedies like it before. And one thing that I find reassuring is how seriously our village leaders and our police department take our safety. I just left my daughter's first Oaklawn T-ball game, which was a really fun and safe community event, thanks to your dedication. So I just wanted to let you know how much I appreciate it.
Well, thank you, but you know what? I'm just one little part of the system. Where's our police chief? He's not here tonight. It's the police department that keeps us safe.
He's out policing.
Yeah, that's probably it. He's probably right in a parking ticket somewhere. But thank you, thank you. And I will read that proclamation on the matters of the mayor. All right, um, it's my privilege now to recognize...
Anymore?
Oh, we have more?
No.
No.
Nope, just two, okay. It's my privilege now to recognize our newly elected trustees. They're not newly, but they have been reelected and need to be sworn in. So we'll start with Timothy Desmond, who can't be here today, do some of his work obligations, but we will swear him in tomorrow morning. So we will begin with District 3, trustee Paul Mallow. Trustee Mallow.
I, State Your Name.
I, Paul Mallow.
Having been appointed to the position of trustee of the 3rd district...
Having been appointed to the district of 3rd trustee.
In the Village of Oaklawn...
In the Village of Oaklawn.
County of Cook.
County of Cook.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And I will faithfully discharge the duties...
Of the position of trustee...
Of the position of trustee.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
I'd like to thank my wife, she's here, my two sons, Eric and Sean. I appreciate it and look forward to the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now swear in the district... Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Would you like to get a picture of everybody?
Sure. Okay, we will now swear in the trustee of the 5th district, trustee William Bud Stalker.
I, State Your Name.
I, William Stalker.
Having been appointed to the position of trustee of the 5th district...
Having been appointed to the position of trustee of the 5th district...
In the Village of Oaklawn, County of Cook.
In the Village of Oaklawn, County of Cook.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
I will faithfully discharge the duties...
Of the position of trustee...
Of the position of trustee.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability. So, up you go.
Congratulations.
I'd like to introduce my wife, Mary Ellen, and my grandson, Sean, and the newest elected member of the Oaklawn Park District Board, Melinda. Who was sworn in last night? Thank you. Now we will swear in the trustee from the 6th district, Ralph Sock.
I, State Your Name.
I, Ralph Sock.
Having been appointed to the position of trustee of the 6th district...
Having been appointed to the...
Trustee of the 6th district. In the Village of Oaklawn, County of Cook.
In the Village of Oaklawn, County of Cook.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
Of the position of trustee to the best of my ability.
Of the position of trustee to the best of my ability.
Conflict of interest disclosure. Thank you. You know, I just need a comment on the success of this board. I often get compliments on being a mayor. I get some complaints too, but mostly compliments. And I always say that we have a board of trustees here who really, in the bottom of their heart, want the best for the Village of Oaklawn. There's no backstabbing. They all have independent minds and we speak, okay? But we speak as one board and we support everything that this board does. So I want to thank you guys for your cooperation, and I want to thank you for your loyalty to the Village of Oaklawn. Thank you very much. Thank you. Let's take a picture for the press.
Up here, please.
Up here?
Well, actually, it's not better. I'm unphoned. I'm just looking at the background.
Can you guys get on the same page? You guys get on the same page? I don't like the arguing.
We don't live in Oaklawn.
Okay, Steve. Stand.
Go together like your friends.
I don't know any of those people.
Okay, I'm going to take two shots.
All right.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys, congratulations.
Out of the excitement of swearing in our new trustees, I forgot number five on the agenda, which is the conflict of interest disclosure. Does any trustee have any issue or problem with anything on tonight's agenda? Hearing none, we will move on to the approval of the closed meeting minutes of 2023-05 dated April 11th, 2023. Motion, please.
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Sock.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Oluniechak.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Motion passes. Number eight, approval of the regular meeting minutes of 2023-08 dated April 25th, 2023. Motion, please.
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Sock.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Oluniechak.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Motion passed. New business by village trustees. Trustee Oluniechak?
I have no new business.
Trustee Mallow?
Thank you, Mayor, I have two things. Number one, just real quickly, you know, prayers to the Chicago Fire Department in regards to Arianna Preston. You know, I watched that procession this morning, you know, comes all the way down 103rd, and tremendous to see the people on the street, you know, watching, just when they hit Oaklawn right there, Pulaski on their way to Blake and Lamb, it's just tremendous that the people that are out there saluting Evergreen Park Police Department, Oaklawn Police Department, you know, out there just to support them, you know, and it's tragic. So it's just, I just wanted to mention that, so.
Thank you.
Second thing, I want to talk another important issue. I believe trustee Stalker brought it up at our last meeting. Everyone who pays taxes likely knows Oaklawn does not charge an income tax, and neither do the municipalities of Illinois. Counties, cities, and even school districts across the United States impose income, local income taxes, but not in Illinois. The Illinois Constitution even specifically provides that home rule units, which Oaklawn is, of governments can impose a local income tax, but only if the Illinois General Assembly approves, which they have not done to date. There's a reason for this. It's called the Illinois Local Government Distribution Fund, the LGDF. The LGDF was established to give 10% of the state's local income, state's total income tax revenue to Illinois municipalities, including Oaklawn. And that was the case until 2012, when the state started reducing that amount, and in effect kept part of Oaklawn's money for itself. The state justified this move because of its dire financial condition. The state has been shortchanging Oaklawn and other Illinois municipalities for almost 12 years. As of today, Oaklawn's LGDF sits around 6%, and not the 10% that was promised. On top of this, the state has passed dozens of tax hikes, fees increases over this time. In fact, since Governor Pritzker has been in office, he and the General Assembly increased taxes and fees 24 times, costing Illinois taxpayers $5.2 billion. A few weeks ago, Governor Pritzker was boasting about the state's improved financial condition and even raised the possibility of tax cuts. Before everyone gets too excited, keep in mind, next year is an election year, and Governor Pritzker is also considering a run for president. What does all this mean to Oaklawn? Since 2012, the state has kept almost $45 million of Oaklawn's share of income taxes. $45 million of that money should have been coming to Oaklawn every single year. That's about $4 million each and every year. Money that could have been and should have been gone to critical infrastructure repairs, public safety, and many other things that Oaklawn taxpayers rely upon to live their lives. Our state senators and reps are in Springfield. I know all these trustees on this board have expressed our concern and have wrote to these legislators. So they are now currently wrapping up the 2023 spring legislative session and trying to restore the LGDF back to 10%. That's an issue in front of them. So I plead with our residents, anybody who is in these municipalities, not only Oaklawn, but every municipality, this is a fight for all of these municipalities, to contact your state senator and our current reps that are in there to restore the LGDF to 10%. That's all I have.
Thank you, trustee. Just to add to that, myself and trustee Stalker were down in Springfield a couple of weeks ago with about 200 other municipal mayors here from the state of Illinois lobbying to restore this money. We get these unfunded mandates all the time, and we have to find the money out of our budget to do these funding. And it sounded like it was a positive thing. I don't think you're going to see the 10%, but we may get an increase. Today, I happened to read that the state of Illinois is $1.8 billion short, okay, expected revenue. So I reached out to our representatives today to find out how that's going to impact this, and I was told that this money is in a separate fund that's not going to be impacted. We'll see how that all works out, but we've all tried pretty hard, am I right, Bud?
Absolutely.
To point to the importance of this funding for municipalities. After all, we provide the services closest to the residents, and these dollars make the villages strong, so hopefully they'll deliver. Okay, trustee Bud Stalker?
I can't not say something about what trustee Mallow just said. We were supposed to get 10% of the LGDF. It's been taken away from us year after year for the last five or six years, and it's just terrible because we have no say in it. The state will take that money and use it for whatever they, whatever way they want, and we have no say. So we went down to Springfield and tried to have a say. Let's see what happens, and if it doesn't come back to us, by the way, it is our money that has been taken, we can certainly start some big complaints. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Trustee Sock?
Just a couple of quick things. I want to thank Public Works again. Bill Meyer's not here tonight, but him and his team. We get calls as trustees for different things in the village. Today, I had a lady that had a comet pole on her lawn that rolled off the lawn and into the street and blocked her driveway. Public Works, Bill will either get a hold of comet, get a crew out there. These guys are on call for us and make us look good with all the things they take care of us for us when we get calls from our constituents. So for everything they've been doing, I just wanted to give Bill a shout out and his team because they do an amazing job. And I wanted to build on one of the things that trustee Mallow said about the funerals for our police and fire personnel that have passed away and have been held at Blake and Lamb. There's a two-pronged thing. First, I want to thank our village manager, Tom Phalen, for sending out emails in regards to these processions when they leave Blake and Lamb. They typically go right down 103rd, and he sends that email out to the village residents saying, hey, line the streets as best you can. And that's my district, from right down 103rd, both sides, District 6. And I go out there and I see all my residents that, you know, that I know from my district, and they're out there lining the streets. So it's just a thank you, as Paul had said, to all the residents that go out there and show their respect for these slain officers and firefighters. It really says a lot and really shows what Oaklawn's about when we get the amount of people out there that we do to see those officers and fire personnel off. So I just wanted to, you know, thank Tom for making it known so that everybody knows when it is, what time, where to be, but what to do. So because of that, that's why we get the kind of turnout we do. I just want to thank you. Thank you, Mayor, that's all I have.
We just, just one thing on that, we don't have a school on 103rd. You know, watching that procession, you see St. John Fisher, they literally emptied the school and they were all on that 103rd street as that procession came by. And it was, it was pretty long. So I know there was a lot of residents that were probably coming up to that street seeing it, you know, blocked by the Chicago Police Department, but I know they did a really good job, so.
Yeah.
Thank you. Matters of the village manager?
Nothing this evening.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, we are moving on to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine and have been brought forward at the direction of the Board of Trustees, village manager, or village committees, and will be enacted with one motion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. A, request Board of Trustees approval of the Zoning and Planning Commission recommendation for a special use permit to allow for a veterinary urgent care center in an R3 zone district at 9801 South Cicero Avenue. And B is ordinance 23-09-29, which grants that variance. C is a request the Board of Trustees approval of the Zoning and Planning Commission's recommendation to allow a frame construction in the exterior wall of a commercial building at 4300 West 95th Street. And D is ordinance 23-09-30, allowing that variation. E, request Board of Trustees approval of the Zoning and Planning Commission recommendation to allow a 60-foot square foot garage area and a 10-foot garage length variation at 6701 West 88th Street. And F is ordinance 23-09-31, allowing that variation. G, resolution 23-09-24, a resolution approving a proposal for C and M Lowy Associates Incorporated for the professional design services for the village parking lot improvements at 4847 and 4869 West 95th Street. Both are parking lots. H, resolution 23-09-25, a resolution approving a second amendment to the regional water system sale, purchase, and service agreement between the Village of Oaklawn, Illinois, and its Southwest system customers. I, resolution 23-09-26, a resolution approving a second amendment to the regional water system sale, purchase, and service agreement between the Village of Oaklawn, Illinois, and its Northern system customers. J, resolution 23-09-27, a resolution approving the Benchmark Construction Company as the low bidder to perform the Oaklawn Regional Water System, BP 78 Phase 3. And K, resolution 23-09-28, a resolution approving a service agreement from Precedent Development, incorporating Doing Businesses, Precedent Solutions, to provide IT services for the Oaklawn Regional System Communications Center. A motion, please?
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the vote, please.
Trustee Sock.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Oluniechak.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Okay, we will go on to the village clerk's report.
We have disbursement resolution number 2023-09D dated May 9th, 2023, in the amount of $10,401,378.64.
Thank you. A motion, please?
Motion to pay the bills.
Second?
Second.
Roll call?
Trustee Sock.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Oluniechak.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Motion passes. We move on now to the village president's report, and I will read the mayoral proclamation. A national gun violence awareness day in Oaklawn. Whereas Section 6A of Article 7 of the 1970 Constitution of the State of Illinois provides that any municipality which has a population of more than 25,000 is a home rule unit. Therefore, a home rule unit, pursuant to the provisions of said Section 6A in Article 7, may exercise any power to perform any function pertaining to its governmental affairs, including but not limited to the power to tax or incur debt. Whereas every day, more than 120 Americans are killed by gun violence alongside more than 200 who are shot and wounded, averaging about 17,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas Americans are 26 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income counties, countries. Whereas in an average year in Illinois, 1,622 people die by gun deaths with a rate of 12.9 deaths per 100,000 people, a crisis that costs the state $18.6 billion each year, of which $62.5 million is paid for by taxpayers. Illinois has the 35th highest gun rate deaths in the U.S. Whereas gun homicides and assaults are concentrated in cities, with more than half of all firearm-related gun deaths in the nation occurring in 127 cities. And whereas cities across the nation, including Oaklawn, are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions. And whereas protecting public safety in the communities they serve is the mayor's highest responsibility. And whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous history. Whereas mayors and law enforcement officers in partnership with local violence intervention activists and resources know their communities best and are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. Whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever as we see an increase in firearms homicides and non-fatal shootings across the country, increased calls to domestic violence hotlines, and increase in gun city, city gun violence. Whereas in January 2013, Heidi Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15, and on June 3rd, 2021, to recognize the 25th birthday of Ms. Pendleton, born June 2nd, 1977. People across the United States will recognize Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange to attribute to Heidi Pendleton and other victims of gun violence and to loved ones of these victims. And whereas the idea of inspired, was inspired by a group of Heidi's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate their life by wearing orange, they chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. Whereas anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 2nd, the first Friday of June in 2023, to help awareness about gun violence. And whereas by wearing orange on June 2nd, 2023, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. Whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Therefore, be it proclaimed by the village president of the Village of Oaklawn, Cook County, Illinois, in the exercise of its home rule powers states as filed. The village hereby recognizes June 2nd, 2023, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in Oaklawn, and this mayoral proclamation shall be in full force effective May 9th, 2023. And I want to thank you for coming and bringing this to our attention. It's important work. And I want to foul up a little bit on this officer, again, Officer Preston, that was shot and killed in the line of duty. You know, Blake and Lamb provides free funeral services for our first responders, and they've been doing that ever since I was a policeman. It seems to me they've been very busy recently here in Oaklawn. There's been quite a few of these events, and, you know, I read that the police department today, Chicago Police Department, arrested the four offenders that shot and killed this young woman, 23 years of age, who had a bright future, and they all had pretty extensive criminal histories. You know, the police department is doing their job. They're just one wheel in the cog of criminal justice. I ask, I plead for our state's attorneys and our judges to protect these officers who give their, these officers who serve us every day, particularly in honor to ones that have given their life. Over 600 police officers are on the wall, the memorial wall downtown. 600 police officers are on the wall, the memorial wall downtown, over the course of the history of the Chicago Police Department. If they don't do their jobs, if the judges don't do their jobs, and the state's attorneys do the job, sometimes I feel the police department is just spinning their wheels. So I am asking, again, for the state's attorneys and judges to prosecute these violent criminals, get them off the street. Not only will it save our policemen, but it'll save our citizens who are victims of this. That's all I have to say on that?
Well said.
Well, thank you, thank you. It comes from the heart, and I think everybody on this board is 100% in support of our police department. So, again, maybe we can draft a letter up and send it to Judge Evans and Kim Fox, okay, with our request. All right, we don't have any executive session today?
No, we do not.
Okay, then I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
A sec. Oh, we got two at once.
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Oliniechak?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you for coming out. Thank you again, trustees, for your hard campaign.